I'd like to call the June 2nd Commissioner meeting in order. I'd like to welcome everybody here. We'll turn it over to Commissioner Goodenhill for education, please.
Two of us, please. I want to tell you this afternoon, knowing that you control all circumstances. There's nothing that we can do, nothing that we can decide on, because you control everything. The greatest thing that we could do is to be able to allow some type of ordinance, or we be able to decide on something that would have someone to know Jesus Christ as their Savior. I pray we don't make decisions in order to be reelected, and we don't make decisions just because it's not popular. I pray we make decisions that's right by you. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. Amen.
I believe to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glad you're here, Commissioner. I'm looking now at your approval or adjustments to the agenda. Making a look to approve the agenda. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Question carries. First thing.
My call, yes. The first thing on our agenda will be a presentation. If I could, I'd like to get all the commissioners to come down front there at the podium and ask Ms. Virginia, Jenny Burris, to come up. All of his ladies on the left. I'd like to thank Ms. Jenny Burris, Virginia Jenny Burris. She began her tenure with the Stanley County Health Department in December 1992. And throughout her public health career, Jenny has undertaken many roles, or new roles, in different areas of the department, gaining new insight and knowledge in each additional role. She started out her career in women, infants and children's, and WIC program, unit. She worked there for 12 years until she transferred to the dental clinic in April 2005. She served in the dental clinic for eight years until she transformed to the business office of General Health in February of 2014. Although she has served Stanley County Health Department, altogether, she's served the Stanley County Department for 32 years. Jenny has been a dedicated health department employee and has consistently performed her work timely and with a high level of accuracy, which were essential for her role in the health business office. Jenny will be missed by the department because of her years of experience, knowledge and contributions. Jenny has been looking forward to her retirement and plans to spend time with her family, her husband, son, daughter-in-law and grandchildren. You can't beat that. She and her husband are celebrating 40 years of marriage this September and are planning a cruise. Congratulations to Jenny and her retirement. We wish her the best. I didn't see this right here in front of me. I knew there was something going right.
Well, they weren't when I came down. Yeah, boy.
Okay, next on the agenda, I have public comment, and I've got some people signed up. And if it's for the budget, we're gonna have a hearing for the budget session. So, Mr. Rayburn, or whoever is for the budget, would you like to wait and speak at the hearing for the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that'd be good. All right, first on the list is Kathy Johansson, 410 Long Street. Is she here to come forward? Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you very much. Distinguished members, my name is Kathy Johansson. I own KBJB Entertainment Company. We are a 501(c). We do live comedy shows, game shows, bingo shows, trivia shows, children's shows, shows with female impersonators. I am a stand-up comic and impersonator. I've been traveling for the last five years for veterans, children and animal organizations, for not-for-profits and charities. KBJB has probably raised more money than most people have made in a couple of years. And that being said, I stand on business and I am honest to a fault. Due to the recent happenings in our country, I've decided to stay close to home. Now, truth be told, I'm not into politics and I believe parties are for birthdays and cocktails, quite frankly. I checked into most of your backgrounds and I see that most of you are nonpartisan, so to speak. I've been an independent voter all of my life. I put an application into JCPC because you all put out a call for someone to join on some of your boards. I looked through some of the needs of the community. I saw that this one for the kids was available, and because I work with children, I saw this one for the kids. And with my background, in which I am completely background-checked, why? Because I do work with children. I have a character that impersonate. Her name is Kaleidoscope, and she teaches sign language and acceptance. And for the record, I think anybody that works with kids or has access to children should absolutely be background-checked and vetted. I don't really care who it is. Being that, being said, you don't know me from a can of paint, guys. Let me give you a little bit about my background. My father was a Suffolk County police officer. I lost my mother at a young age at 13. As you could only imagine, I was a little bit rebellious when I was a child. But my father was a great man and a great cop. He saw spunk, and now, thanks to him, I'm a spunky rebellious adult. I truly wanted to be a police officer, but instead, I became a comedian. There's a joke in there somewhere, but I'm not gonna give you that right now. Now, this particular position has been out there and nobody has wanted it until dun dun da, someone with my background took some interest in it. And now, we have people putting in for positions who already probably have board positions, per your rules, and they're not allowed, that's not allowed to happen. Only one board position per person. Now, listen, I'm not asking for the chair, yet. Truly, folks, anger has been a motivator all my life. When I first started comedy, all the guys wouldn't hire me because I was funnier than they were. So, I started two very successful comedy tours. Off the cuff for KJ, we brought up-and-coming comedians to the forefront, and badass bitches of comedy, AKA Babs of Comedy. All female comedians, again, raising money for charity. And FYI, I teach comedy writing classes, and as usual, I try to keep a good sense of humor about all this kind of stuff. And in closing, I just wanted to read from your public statements and your comment to the public, right? Vision, your vision is cultivate and sustain a community environment where children and adults learn, families and businesses thrive, and our residents are healthy and safe. Completely agree. Mission statement, your mission is leadership, professional staff, work to ensure overall public safety, protect and promote health and well-being, effectively carry out services mandated by state statutes, grow the economy, encourage literacy, as do I, and education, as do I, and enhance the quality of life. Listen, I, whether you put me on this board or not, guys, I'll find a place in the community to help kids. If not here, then someplace else that welcomes my motivation and my skill. And on that note, I thank you so much for your time. Have a fabulous evening. Thank you.
Okay, next on the list is, is that Maxine Terry? Is that correct? Or I mispronounced it?
Yes, it's Maureen.
Please state your name and address, and try and limit your words to three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Maureen Terry, and I live at 410 Burleson Street in Albemarle. And I would like for y'all to help the library get a elevator put in. I have a bad heart condition, and I no longer can walk up that ramp at all. And I'm not the only one in Stanley County that can't. The only way I can access this library is I call upstairs and I ride up on the freight elevator. And I love going to the library, and I think it's very unfair that that's the only way I can get in there. Because I'm a taxpayer and I'm a voter, and I would like for y'all to help us get one because it would be very simple, that first floor, I go in the bottom and go to activities there. But if I wanna go upstairs and read a book, or read the newspaper, or anything, I cannot do it because I cannot walk up that ramp no more. And there's some steps, and they're just as bad, because there are about 20 or 25 of them, and I can't do that either. And my daughter has told me, I'm almost 80 years old, they've done about all they can do for my heart. And I would like for y'all to take into consideration, y'all could go in the bottom and turn to the right, and there's two doors there that would be a perfect place to put the elevator. And you wouldn't have to bother that art or anything outside. So, I would appreciate if y'all would take that into consideration and help us people that want to go to the library and can't get in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Terry. That's all I have signed up on the comment section for now, and I'll ring the fire department up a little bit later for budget. All right. Next on the agenda is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council appointment, and the presenter is Ms. Dolly Kleck.
Good evening. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council is a voluntary council that is made up of about 20-some members of different professions that are required by general statute. And then, there are a couple of public members as well. And so, in your packet, you have three applications for two of the public members that are board county commissioner-appointed positions. Mrs. Johansson, who spoke tonight, and Mr. Michael Hatley, and Victoria Ramos.
Okay, I see the appointments. What is the wish of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Michael Hatley and Victoria Ramos to these two open seats.
You got it.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second. All in favor for Michael Hatley and Victoria Ramos? Please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the list is the Stanley County Aging Funding Plan for year 26, and the presenter is Ms. Pamela Sullivan, Senior Services Director. Hey, y'all already.
Good evening, Chairman Barbie and fellow commissioners. I'm here tonight to seek board approval for the Stanley County Aging Funding Plan. This funding plan outlines the allocation of the Home and Community Care Block grant funds that our senior services department receives to support the aging programs in our county. These vital programs include in-home services, both Level 1 home management, and Level 2 personal care, congregant nutrition, home-delivered meals and transportation services, medical in general, as well as senior center operations. We are also excited to announce the addition of adult daycare as a new service in this upcoming fiscal year. We have not received the fiscal year 2026 allocations yet. In the meantime, we've been asked to proceed with our planning based on FY25 figures. The total amount for HCCBG funding for FY25 was $550,626, with an addition of $66,400 for nutrition subsidy. The HCCBG committee met over the, over three months to discuss funding options for each program. The funding amounts per service as presented by the committee to the advisory board are included in your funding packet that you have. The board has approved this funding plan, which also includes a contingency to address any increases or decreases when the final FY26 allocations are released. Tonight, I'd like to ask for approval for this funding plan for FY26 and acceptance into the county budget. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, commissioners have had time to look over the request, and I.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Okay.
Are meals on wheels in this money?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one other.
Okay, right ahead.
Question. I know meals on wheels serve a number of people. And I hope people are listening or watching tonight. You probably still need volunteers to do that, don't you?
Absolutely. We have 16 routes that go throughout the county, and we ask for volunteers to serve at least once a month.
One day a month. If somebody wants to serve, they have a car and a driver's license, you can put them to work.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm looking for some suggestions.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the county's Aging Funding Plan for July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026, and accept these funded to the county's budget.
Got a motion? Second, I missed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Hey Pamela, how many folks did you have at the event you had, the shredding event? I know there's a bunch out in the western part, I didn't know about in Albemarle.
Right, so the one, the one in Albemarle, that event had about 120 folks come through, and the one in Locust had around 85.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Stanley County Emergency Operations Plan, and presenter is Mr. Michael Rohr.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I actually have two items for your consideration tonight. The first one being a resolution to formally adopt the update of the Stanley County Emergency Operations Plan. This is a document that has been, the last major overhaul of it was 2009, 2010-ish. We do do updates to it annually, as required by law. But this update is a complete overhaul from the previous one. It's a lot of the same information, but just more in-depth and broader in nature. The Emergency Operations Plan is a foundational document that outlines how Stanley County will prepare for, respond to and recover from all hazards to include natural disasters such as hurricanes, floods, public health emergencies, technological incidents and acts of terrorism. It's designed to ensure the safety and well-being of our residents, protection of property, and effective communication and coordination of local, state and federal agencies during those emergencies. North Carolina General Statute 166A, local governments are required to maintain a current emergency operations plan and procedures. North Carolina Division of Emergency Management also requires local plans be reviewed and updated regularly to reflect current threats, operational structures and best practices. Some of the things outlined in the Emergency Operations Plan is a clear chain of command and decision-making structure aligned with the incident command system. the incident command system, defined roles and responsibilities for county departments, emergency services, municipal partners, and support agencies, protocols for shelter operations, evacuation, damage assessment, and mass care, and integration with regional and state resources for mutual aid and support. Um, if any of you have any questions specific to the Emergency Operations Plan, I'll be happy to answer those as best I can.
Do you have anybody?
Uh, how often, Michael, do you have to update this plan?
We review it annually and update as needed. And that is done not only by our staff, but also by staff at North Carolina Emergency Management.
When was the last update?
The, the last update was twenty-twenty-four, last year. Um, but the, again, the, the comprehensive update such as this one, the last time that was done was around two thousand nine, two thousand ten.
Michael, did any of this go into effect this past Thursday night?
It, it did not. We were, um, the, the Emergency Operations Plan, while we may, uh, respond similarly to some of the annexes that are listed in there, technically by law, the Emergency Operations Plan does not come into full effect unless a state of emergency is declared.
You have a question? Since you're already up here, you want to go ahead and go into the, uh, Cabarrus-Stanley Union Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, or is that already part of what you just talked about? They got it broke down into two separate things on here. All right, uh...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, adopt the newly revised Emergency Operations Plan as written.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Vice Chair King and a second by Mr. Mills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Seven up. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Uh, the next item that I have for your consideration is another resolution to formally adopt the twenty-twenty-five update of the Cabarrus-Stanley Union Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Um, federal law under the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand, as well as requirements of FEMA and North Carolina Emergency Management mandates that local governments have current FEMA-approved mitigation plan, uh, in order and in place. Uh, that helps the county remain eligible for certain types of pre- and post-disaster federal funding, including FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Program. Uh, what it does, it identifies and prioritizes, uh, projects that protect public industry, infrastructure, safeguard critical facilities, and reduce repetitive disaster losses. Um, this, uh, is done in coordination not only with the three counties, but every municipality within those counties as well. Um, it has developed, uh, over the course of the last fifteen or so months, um, through various planning, uh, structure that is outlined by FEMA. Um, that includes a comprehensive risk assessment of natural disasters such as flooding, hurricanes, severe storms, wildfires, things of that nature, public engagement through surveys and stakeholder meetings, input from emergency services, planning departments, infrastructure experts, public health, and elected officials. Um, and it develops a prioritized list of mitigation strategies and action items tailored to local needs. Um, if you've had a chance to review the document, you will see that it is quite large. Um, Stanley's portion is a smaller ver, uh, portion within that document, but it's still pretty comprehensive and is broken down between the county and the other all municipalities within Stanley County. Um, it basically is, uh, a active blueprint, uh, regarding future disaster, um, damage, minimizing public destruction, and protecting our communities' economic, social, and environmental well-being. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Do you have anything?
How often is this updated as well?
This has to be done every five years. Uh, our current one, which expires, um, at the end of this month, was last updated in twenty-twenty. So this one will carry us through to the next update, which will be twenty-thirty.
And by updating this and this, this will allow you to, us to receive the funds if that, if anything like this were to ever happen?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adopt the twenty-twenty-five Cabarrus-Stanley Union Hazarded Mit, Mitigation Plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Evers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair King. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Seven up.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list is the Norwood Planning and Zoning Board ETJ Representative and the presenter is Mr. Andy Lucas. Andy, man.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this item's from Norwood Planning Board. They have requested that, uh, Mr. Douglas Smith be the county's ETJ representative on their planning board for a three-year term, effective July one, twenty-twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight. Um, they've included a list of their planning and zoning members. Um, if appointed, Mr. Smith would replace Walter Davis, who's chosen not to seek reappointment. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I have a question. How large is the ETJ area around Norwood?
Oh, boy. Um, I don't have the map with me. Um, yeah, they're, um, yeah, I, I don't want to, but without a map in front of me, I'm...
That's fine. I, I, I just think that one person representing that bigger area is not quite up to bar, but that...
And that's the case, I think, with all the towns that have ETJ. They have one, one county represented.
That one. Mm-hmm. Mr. Chairman, I know Doug Smith, uh, previously a schoolteacher, he's retired. He's a upstanding citizen. And I know the majority of the other people that serve on that particular board, which are mainly citizens of Norwood, which they should be. And so with that, I'll make a motion that we appoint Doug Smith.
I'll second that.
I have a second, Ms. Crump. Motion made by Mr. Lawhan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Seven up. Okay, next on the list is the Stanley Community College Board of Trustees Appointment and presenter is Mr. Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The Stanley County Board of Trustees, um, they've included a memo in your packet for the appointment of one member to the Community College Board of Trustees. Um, as a result of legislation over the last few years, uh, the number of appointments that the county commissioners have to the Stanley County Board of Trustees has decreased. Um, there are several applications in your packet for consideration and I'll be happy to answer any questions. And this would be it for a term beginning July one, twenty-twenty-five, going through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-nine.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Melvin Poole for that position.
We got a nomination for Vice Chair King for Mr. Melvin Poole.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Mills. Do you have any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate, uh, Blake Underwood, who is, uh, CPA, resident of Stanley County, uh, has been all of his life. Uh, comes, his father is Greg Underwood, grandfather was, oh, Mr. Underwood, can't think. Yeah, yeah, sorry. Singer moment. But, uh, I think he's an up-and-coming professional young man, which would do a good job.
I'll second that. And, uh, motion by Mr. Bill Lawhan and a second by Mr. Trent Hatley. Um, is there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, I make a motion that the nominations be closed. And, uh, all in favor of Mr. Melvin Poole, raise your right hand. All in favor of Mr. Blake Underwood, raise your right hand. Four to three. Mr. Melvin Poole is the only thing. I would also like to say that, uh, we've lost four appointees to this board. Uh, the legislature took the four governor appointments and four away from us. So, uh, those of those of you that didn't get on by this, please contact your, uh, representative or your senator and see if you can get added back to that. All right. And then, next on the agenda is the twenty-five, twenty-six budget public hearing and workshop dates. Uh, hang on just a second. Okay. And, uh, might as well go ahead and go into the hearing.
Yeah.
So we'll call, uh, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget public hearing and workshop ordered under General Statute one fifty-nine dash twelve. Okay. And, uh, anyone wanting to speak for or against it, I have Mr. Dakota Rayburn listed down here. He'd like to speak.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Hope each of you are doing well. Uh, tonight I want to talk about, uh, the recommended budget and more specifically, uh, the fire tax rate.
Yes, sir.
They're having an issue with their monitors.
Okay.
So just be sure you're clear in terms of mentioning the numbers on there.
Sure, yes, sir.
So they have, they have context because they can't see.
Okay, of course. Um, before I begin, I would like to take just a moment to thank, uh, Commissioner Lawhan for coming out last Wednesday night and spending some time with us, um, our board and our members really appreciate that. Thank you. Um, so some of the issues I'm going to talk about tonight are, um, are things that we have found challenging over the course of the last five years and, uh, how that relates to the fire department. Uh, the first one you see up here is turnout gear cost. Um, in twenty-twenty, the cost for a jacket and a set of pants, uh, was twenty-seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. Uh, today, that same cost is five thousand and sixty-two dollars. Uh, that represents an eighty-three percent increase in price over the last five years. And one reason that's important is every fire department in this county has to outfit their firefighters, uh, in turnout gear. Uh, we have approximately forty firefighters on our fire department that we have to do that with. And, uh, that gear is only good for ten years. So once that gear is out of date, uh, we have to, I have to dispose of it or get rid of it. Uh, the second thing I'm going to talk about, um, is, uh, general liability insurance cost. Uh, so last year to this year, uh, we've seen a hundred and forty-two percent increase in just that single line of insurance. And we have many more insurances than just this one. Um, but this one last year was, uh, sixty-three hundred and fifty-four dollars and it has increased, uh, to this year, uh, fifteen thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Y'all logged into that? Or is, can y'all resource that?
We, we can resource it. Uh, historically, VFIS has been the best for us and that's currently who our provider is through, is VFIS. But that's something we can definitely, uh, look at and shop around.
Is there somebody local that does that or...
Um, Tonda Whitmore is our agent and I believe she's with Bay Area Insurance. I have to go back and look. It might be First Bank Insurance now, but that company has historically taken care of that for us and many of the other fire departments in the county. Um, and this slide right here will transition into the next couple. Um, what you see here is, is our fleet at West Stanley. Um, you can, i-if it's on your screen, you can see in the green, we have three.
Dakota, sorry.
Yes, sir. Of course. Yes, sir.
We can't see that.
Okay.
I, I, I don't know what the issue is. Technical, I, that's why I told Dakota, really need to, he needs to be able to talk through what's on the screen so you guys can have a better idea. And I apologize, I don't know what the technical issue is with that one.
Do we need to fire the technical guy?
And, Mr. Manager, if you don't mind, will you share this with him, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Um, so what you see here is, is our fleet and I will do the best to explain it, uh, from up here as I can. So three vehicles are zero to seven years old. Those actually are small vehicles, so they're a little more easy, uh, easier procured on our end. Um, you see two vehicles and the orange up here, eight to twelve years, and we consider that in the okay range. Um, one of those vehicles is the newest engine company that we purchased in two thousand eighteen. It's a two thousand seventeen model and it is eight years old. Um, and then the remaining part of these vehicles are thirteen-plus years old. And of all those vehicles, we have six right there in the bar graph. Uh, five of those are large vehicles, typically costing more than a million dollars a piece to replace. The youngest of those are eighteen years old, both of them two thousand seven models.
Question.
Of course.
Do you have a life expectancy or a range of mileage where y'all try to swap that?
That is a fantastic question. Typically, um, it is recommended, uh, that first due or, uh, y-your first line of fleet is replaced on engine companies about every ten to twelve years. And then anything specialty, uh, towers, ladder companies, rescues, and tankers typically can get fifteen to twenty years, depending on the miles and usage on them.
What's y'all's mileage?
Um, I could go through here and look and, and I will find out for you.
It's okay.
But that, they're getting up there and, and you'll see why here in just a few minutes about, uh, um, our response volume. Um, apparatus maintenance costs. Um, so in twenty-twenty, uh, for that budget year, we spent sixteen thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars. Um, over the last two years combined to date, and our budget year, uh, runs through September first to August thirty-first, so we're still not out of the woods for twenty-twenty-five. We have spent a hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. Um, from twenty-twenty to just twenty-twenty-five, that's a two hundred and sixty-three percent increase in maintenance in our fire trucks and our whole fleet.
Is that number you're using from this to that?
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, in twenty-twenty, it was sixteen thousand, four hundred and forty-nine. To this year is the highest year that we have on record. Uh, fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars for this year. For fiscal year twenty-four, we spent forty-eight thousand, five hundred and seven dollars.
Could, could, uh, could...
Yes, sir.
Did you have any extraordinary circumstances, circumstances jumped it up that much?
That, that's a great question. Um, we had to replace the transmission in one of our engine companies and that was about a twelve to fifteen thousand dollar project. Um, our brush truck pump, which is an older truck, went out and that was about four thousand. But aside for those two things, there was nothing over what you would normally see in servicing and maintaining a fire truck. Uh, fire truck price increase. So in two thousand and eighteen, we purchased our, our latest engine for five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Um, in twenty-twenty-five, uh, we have one quoted out, uh, right now, one million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars. That represents a hundred and seven percent increase over that five years. And we do not forecast that to come down. Uh, some of the fire truck manufacturers have consolidated. Um, so tho-those prices are being driven up, uh, partly because of that and demand. Right now, uh, in two thousand eighteen, it took us just under a year to receive that truck. We were told it would take thirty-six to forty-two months to receive another one. Um, SCBA unit, uh, age. Um, so we have thirty-two units here for our, for our air packs we wear on our backs, uh, when we're going into, uh, IDLH atmospheres. Um, of those, twenty-two of those are eighteen years old. Those were all purchased in two thousand and seven. Uh, the next oldest one is thirty-three and then we have one outlier at twenty-six years old. Uh, to replace those units, um, it's eight thousand, three hundred and four dollars a piece to replace them. Now, we did some, some work on the front end of that, uh, two years ago or last year, last budget year, we purchased all the air cylinders. And you can get those at fifteen or thirty years. Uh, we purchased thirty-year cylinders to try to help mitigate some of this cost, uh, going forward. And we have submitted for AFG grant funding, so assistance for firefighters, uh, grant, uh, facilitated through the Department of Homeland Security in FEMA, uh, for the last three years. We are currently in cycle right now. Um, we are hopeful to receive those funds and that would cover the cost of these. Um, but obviously with the administration in Washington, they're really buckling down on spending money and trying to find efficiencies in government and we totally support that. Um, we know that this will be heavily scrutinized and we've heard this from our, our grant representatives. Um, so that's kind of the shape we're in now. The life of these air packs determined by NFPA are ten years. So...
How many years?
Ten. Yes, sir. So if God forbid, one of our firefighters were injured or, or killed in the line of duty, they would heavily scrutinize us having an air pack on our backs that's eighteen years old. And, uh, yeah, thirty, we have in the grant for thirty-three total packs. Yes, sir.
Eight thousand?
Eight thousand, three hundred dollars. Yes, ma'am. And that's not including the mask. That's not including the bottle, which again, we've, we purchased the bottles up front, but it's just really expensive. Uh, total responses and overlapping incidents. So on the screen here, and I promise we'll make sure you get a copy of this, you see, uh, responses from twenty-twenty, then a projection to twenty-twenty-eight, um, done here. Last fiscal year, or excuse me, last calendar year, uh, we ran eleven hundred and ninety-seven calls. Of those calls, a hundred and seventy-five of them were overlapping, meaning that we were... Of those calls, 175 of them were overlapping, meaning that we were either dispatched or committed on another incident, and we had a second one dispatched at the same time. That is the reason we staff the way we do. We know this is going to continue to be a problem as populations increase out there and call volume is being placed on us. So we want to continue to keep staffing at an appropriate level so we can respond to those second emergencies. And that doesn't just apply to our district, it applies to our surrounding district and mutual aid partners. They fully expect us to show up on the scene of a house fire or a structure fire, or, as you know, Charlotte Pipe is out there in Oakboro, and they expect our tower company and our personnel to come to that. So if, for whatever reason, we had to reduce staffing due to funding, it would put us in a real bind on getting to those secondary emergencies. So we would be more heavily relying on our mutual aid partners to come into our area to service it. And the projection does not include the increase in population that we will get. I'm sure Commissioner Efrid can speak to how much growth we're experiencing out there. I believe it's an 1,100-home neighborhood coming to the Bethel Church, Colley Store area, and then the Phase 2 of Locust Valley is coming, and I'm sure a couple more projects. But that will be a significant increase and demand placed on us because of that. Between 2020 and 2025, and this is a statistic we're really proud of, we saved $2,433,824 in property. We track all this. The Fire Marshal's Office also tracks it, but that's how the amount of property we've saved in the last five years. And then call volume by department for 2024, this does exclude the city of Albemarle, but for all the county fire departments, you see here, there was 5,043 calls dispatched for service. West Stanley Fire Department ran 1,197 of those, 23% of the county's volume. The next nearest fire department to us is Center Rule Norwood Fire Department, where they ran 664 or represent 13% of the total county's volume. Fire tax budget growth by department, and this is a...
Dakota?
Yes, sir. Of course.
If EMS gets a call...
Mm-hmm.
Why is a fire truck required to go?
That is... That's a great question. So as you know, the AMFs are located throughout the county. I believe there's four EMS bases now, and then... So those are staffed, obviously, but the fire departments are much closer in that community, so we're just strategically positioned. And so we go as a first responder. I believe anything Charlie, Delta, and Echo is how it's coded. So we go to those calls in addition to the ambulance service coming with us.
Yes.
Of course. Yes, sir. And all of our firefighters are certified at the EMT level. We have many that are higher than that at the advanced level, and that's the level of service we provide out there, and then we have a handful of paramedics on staff. The fire tax budget, this is sorted by percentage, and it'll make sense when you see it. You see here, the average across the fire departments, the county fire departments, it was a 34, almost a quarter percent increase in the budgets. Couple outliers here. You see New London at 11%, and you see Oakboro at 79.5%. West Stanley, we fall into 35% increase. So we're right here, right around average increase by percentage for the budget for next year. So what does this mean for the taxpayer? We got these numbers from Clinton at the Tax Office, and we really appreciate him sending these to us. The median value for residential property in our district last year was $207,881. This year, that has been bumped up to $303,735 at 12 cents. And again, we're not asking for an increase in any way. You would see an addition of $9.58 a month to your tax bill. There is a chart over here that shows residential and commercial combined, but this does exclude vacant land, and Clinton made that clear when he sent that over to me. And so how are we going to spend the money next year? A few major things that we are planning on doing is adding an additional 24-hour position that will give us a staffing level of five 24 hours a day, and then a six-floating day or night position. The purchase of another 1,000-gallon engine company, again, at $1,151,000. If we do not get the grant funding, we are putting a plan in place to purchase 12 air packs next year and then 12 for the next two years following. That's $99,658 per purchase there. Four additional turnout gear sets, giving us a total of eight for next year, because we're already getting wrapped up and being behind in some of that right there. And then four portable radios. I'm sure the communications center, and I'm sure y'all have been told about the radio situation in the county. Our radios are 2014 model. We had two portable radio failures two weeks ago. It was given to the radio shop. They put it on a machine, hoping it was just tuning. It was not it. It was factory parts that had just failed. So the two options are try to find somebody that can source parts, because they're not being made, or purchase a new radio, and those are about $8,000 apiece. And then I have the rest of the lines budgeted out in here for y'all to look at. And then I... If you'll allow me, Commissioner Lahon, he posed a question to me the other night, and I think it's a good question, and I answered it very quickly. He asked, "What keeps me up at night?" And I quickly, off the cuff, responded with, "Well, of course, the fire tax going down." It's a little deeper than that. That is a major part of it, but, you know, each of these guys sitting behind me tonight, and they, I feel confident, represent all the firefighters in our county. Get up each and every day and put their pants on and come to work, not knowing what they're going to see, not knowing if they're going to be injured, or hopefully not killed in the line of duty. So the thing that keeps me up at night is not being able to provide the resources and the tools for them to effectively do their job. And while that definitely burdens the fire department and the firefighters, it more specifically burdens the taxpayers if we cannot effectively do our job. So with that, if y'all have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Yes, sir.
Andy?
Okay.
Andy, is there any precedent of these communities that are improving this development, helping to fund these projects or these issues, and taking some of the burden off of them?
No, there's not any precedent for the municipalities to offset the cost of volunteer fire department.
Or should...
I mean, they... Obviously, I don't know statutorily whether a... Whether a city has the statutory ability to even make an appropriation to a volunteer fire department. I'm not looking at city government. I have to research that.
What's your annual salaries?
Annual salaries. Let me pull this up for you.
How much a year do you spend on that?
Yes, sir. Hold on one second, I'll pull this up for you, and I'll tell you what we budgeted. So this year, we budgeted $820,000 for payroll. Now... Yes, sir. Now, in addition to that, the fire department, or just like any business, is responsible for 7.65% going out for taxes on that. So, yes, sir.
Your budget is $800,000. Budget for...
No, sir. No, last year's budget was $1.6 million. Yes, sir. So, and in this, and you'll see it, I have it separated by percentage there. Next year, and we try to stay well below 60%, 54% of that budget goes to personnel.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question for Chief.
Go ahead.
Dakota, I noticed, and I don't know if this is a municipality problem or something that the fire departments do, but just today alone, you had two false alarms at a house.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Actually, it was the same house.
It was.
And I know Mecklenburg County, I think, charges homeowners like a fee, or they used to, for a false alarm, like 50 bucks or something. Do they still do that, or is that...
No, sir. My understanding is that's not done, simply because they do pay fire tax. So if the fire alarm goes off, they expect us to show up and confirm that it's false.
Yeah, I was thinking that they were a fee or something, that a false alarm or something.
I'm not aware of any.
So that would be, and I know that would be... Do you know the number of, like, false alarms that you guys deal with?
I can absolutely get that to you. Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, I'm just curious.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to check into that. I knew they were a fee at one time if you had a false alarm.
Sure.
You know, in so many, so many days or something.
Yes, sir. And honestly, we spend a lot of time in that neighborhood going to false alarms and then the one-off medical...
I see it. Thanks, sir.
Do you have any other questions?
Chief, do you... Have you sent this presentation to us in our emails?
I sent it to Andy this morning.
I've sent it to you since I've been sitting here.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. If I may, Chief Udy sitting behind me from Ridgecrest, and I know each of you have spent time with him, I would ask that y'all please, please consider his request. Their Board of Directors and the chief officers of that fire department have really worked hard to try to find a solution to their district, and obviously, that definitely impacts them, but it impacts all of us on the western end of the county too, because he responds into our area a ton, and their fire department is a very good one. And so I just ask that you please consider their request.
Thank you for coming in.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dakota. Appreciate it. Anybody else have anything to speak on the budget? Any other departments or anything needing to speak? If not, I'll close the hearing. Our budget meeting will be on Wednesday, June 4, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and I guess I'll be here.
Be in the...
Any room?
Josh Morton Meeting Room. Yes, sir.
Do we need to take a vote on that, or just a...
No, I think you just recess this evening. You'll recess this evening.
All right, I've got one other item, then that is the consent agenda. I think everybody's looked over that.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve from Commissioner Lahon. Second?
Second.
Second by Vice Sheriff King. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And I'd like to have a board comments and committee reports, and I'll start with Ms. Crump.
I think I would like to just... It's a big shout-out to all of our emergency personnel for last Thursday, when we had such a scary evening with the flooding and the emergencies I've heard a little bit, and I probably have no idea what all you went through, but thank you so much for what you do every single day for your people, but particularly last Thursday, I'm sure it was quite a night.
Mr. Hatley?
I just want to thank the fire departments for coming out and presenting, and then let's work together and we'll figure this out. Thank you.
Vice Sheriff King? Commissioner, Andy Mills?
As I sit here, I think about being, after being a school teacher, we have several graduates that... Some of your family members that just graduated from high school. We've got a lot of events coming up in our schools. There'll be a meeting here tomorrow night about our schools. I hope that we have input. That's the way that we understand and find out what we need to do, and we can do a lot of things, but unless we hear from you and let us know, I think our schools are the center of our communities, especially like Ridgecrest School, and it's you guys that tell us what we need to do. And tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, there'll be a meeting right here. Thank you.
Commissioner Lahon?
I too thank the fire department members for being here, and good presentation. Appreciate the answers to the questions. Also congratulate all 2025 graduates from the high schools and the colleges, and I'm proud to say my granddaughter graduated from Carveras College of Health Sciences, and now she's going to be working at Stanley Re... Well, not Stanley Regional, but Atrium Stanley. She says she's tired of driving back and forth to Concord. So I congratulate all the students that have graduated. Thank you.
Mr. Efrid?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, again, thank you guys for coming out, and, you know, all of that stuff, and that's what a lot of the department that we struggle with also in our budget, because everything you mentioned that's went up 50%, 100%, we see that same thing too on everything that we do with Scoosa buses and everything, with Mr. Rourke and what he does. So it's challenging, you know, to manage budgets like that. But again, thank you, guys, and Chief Udy, I certainly appreciate you being here, and Dakota, the building's looking good there at West Stanley, so I hope I can get by there in the next couple of days and check it out.
Anytime. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to thank you guys, too. You don't get enough thanks, and I appreciate what all of you do. I really do. And I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Jenny Beres on her retirement and wish her the best. And if I have anything else from anybody, I'll call this meeting adjourned, or not adjourned, recessed until June 4 at 3:00 p.m. for a budget workshop.